Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM, January 10th, 2022. Okay, the first is the pledge. Mike, could you do the pledge, please?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, is Jimmy here?
No.
No? Okay, does anybody want to do the prayer? Okay, I'll do it. Okay, Father, we count to you and we just thank you for all of us being together. And we thank you that you are protecting our town. And we just ask, Lord, that you help us tonight, the council, to make the right decisions for the town. These things we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen. Okay, Sandy, roll call, please.
Scott Oldham. Pamela Samples.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
Okay, first thing we have is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, December 27th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Sandy, please.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have the action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Sandy.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next step on the agenda will be the election of officers. And first, we have the president. So do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to make Pam Samples president.
I'll second.
Hey, Sandy.
Sorry, I'm just catching up here. William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
I abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next step on the agenda is vice president. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to make William Ellis vice president.
Second.
Hey, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis.
Abstain.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next on the agenda, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that's appointed by council president. So we have a vacancy for the term ended 2021. So do we have anybody that's?
Kevin Tilotti has a candidate.
Yes, thank you, Sandy. I have spoken with Ron, our building inspector. I'm a butcher's last name right now. For some reasons, I can't remember how to pronounce it. Van Divender. And he is interested in being.
Okay, so we don't vote on this?
Sandy, the council gets to appoint this one. So it's up to you.
Okay.
I mean, the president, the president gets to appoint this one.
Okay, so I'll appoint Ron Van Divender as on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I have a question on that. Is that not? You don't have to have a political party balance on that one?
You do not.
Okay, good.
And something else, I'm just curious, and you guys probably know the answer. There's no conflict with him being on the planning department, is there?
From what I've read in Indiana Code, no, there's not.
Okay, Darla, is that correct?
I would agree.
Okay, good. Just making sure.
Hey, anybody else have anything to say? Okay, the next one up is Park and Recreation Board. That is a one Democrat and one Republican. And that's pointed by council vote. And we have, first, we have a vacancy determined in 2021. And I'm assuming Katie Arthur.
Yes, she showed interest in the position. And there was some questions last time about the party. And I've confirmed, and William has confirmed, that she is a Republican.
Okay. And then, so we should vote for that separate, correct? Vote for Katie first?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'm going to go ahead.
Sounds like we're echoing tonight.
All night. I know, we're on the same page. I'll make a motion to make Katie Arthur, appoint her to the Parks and Recreation Board.
I'll second.
Hey, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next is a vacancy for the term ending. It says 2024. Do we have anybody for that?
And does that have to be a Democrat, then, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah, we have one Democrat, we're Republican.
Okay.
Unless we pass a resolution, correct?
Yes, if the town council. If the town council finds that it cannot find a candidate that meets the requirements of the statute, it can go ahead and waive the requirements.
Have we had any interest in either party of a person?
The only one that has approached me was also Ron Van Divender. So he told me that before the Kevin told me about the BZA, so I don't know if he could do both or not.
Darla, do you know if he can do both?
I would say no, because there's a statute out there that allows BZA members to hold only one office. Or that requires BZA members to hold only one office. And sitting on the Board of Appeals, Board of Zoning Appeals is in itself an office. So I would say, no, he cannot serve on the Parks Board and the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I would also say, I think we should reach out to Democratic chairman or chairwoman, whoever that will be after their caucus, and see if they can find someone.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
So should we table this, Darla?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion to table this till next time?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next step on the general is the annual appointments by the town council. First one we have is for the Monroe County Emergency Management Advisory Council. And that's Mike Corman. And Mike, would you like to keep that?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion for Mike?
I make a motion that we make Mike Corman the Monroe County Emergency Management Advisor Counsel.
Second.
And Sandy.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one we have is Monroe County Solid Waste District Board. That's Dan Swafford. And Dan, would you like to stay on that?
Sure, I'll stay on it.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
Okay, William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
I abstain.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one on the agenda is Elska Chamber of Commerce. And that's Mike Farmer. And Mike, would you like to stay on that?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have a motion for Mike?
Make a motion to make Mike Farmer the Elska Chamber of Commerce member.
Second.
Okay, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And that's me, and I would like to keep it if possible.
I make a motion that we elect Pam Samples as the MPO representative, I guess.
I'll second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
I abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next step is resolutions, and we have none.
Is this where we like say we're going to lose weight in that, because it's like the New Year's? About those resolutions?
I abstain.
Okay.
Okay, so the next step is ordinance on the first reading. There are none. Next, we have ordinance on the second reading. It's ordinance 2021-21 to amend the block. I can't even see that.
Hook-on fees.
Hook-on fee policy.
I think my lighting is bad over here. I can't really see it. Okay, hook-on fee for policy. And who talks about that? Is that you, Mike?
We discussed this a little bit at the last meeting. We discussed this a little bit at the last meeting. But if the council is inclined to pass this ordinance, then a paragraph will be added to the town code under connections and tap charges, which makes it clear that a hook-on fee cannot be purchased by a developer until that developer has obtained a building permit and completed the foundation for the project.
Does anybody, public, or anybody have any questions? Council?
One question, just Darla, can you just summarize that really quick on what we discussed last meeting? On the changes, the biggest change?
Well, the purpose. Well, the purpose of it is to keep developers from purchasing hook-on fees in large quantities before they've even started their project. So you don't want this to, you don't want to get into a situation where they're purchasing tens, if not a couple hundred, hook-on fees for 1,500 bucks. And then at some point, five years down the road, or whatever, you want to raise the hook-on fee. And then the second problem is you've got an accounting issue or nightmare in utilities where you're trying to keep track of who purchased the hook-on fees and when. So this is basically to simplify things for the town.
And there was no rate increase?
There, there has not been at this point, no.
No, there may be. Right, there may be one coming. Because my understanding is that we are going to ask Baker Tilly to take a look at the utilities finances and do a report for us.
Yeah, that's what I was curious about, because I know we discussed it. I was just curious. I couldn't remember if we brought that up last meeting or not, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-21 to amend the hook-on fee policy.
Second.
Sandy, please.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next we have Old Benson's. There's nothing. Next, flood report. Mike, do you have anything for flood report?
I, I, I do not. I did send the the board an update from Christopher Burke. And it was basically rehashing what I'd already said at the last meeting, that they had been down, they're 90% complete. They came down from meeting with us and we made some suggestions and had a couple requests. And with that, they are going to finalize the work study and present it. If you accept it, then we'll permitting will start. And maybe by October this year, we can turn some dirt.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mike? Okay, the next is Envision Elska Update. Dan, do you have an update?
Very, very briefly, we've got a steering committee meeting on the 18th of this month at 11 o'clock in the morning. And then we're going to have that night, a work session meeting with the town at 6 o'clock. And we're nearing the end of our of our Envision Elska project with our managers. And we'll be having some be having some recommendations and some answers here very shortly. That's it. Thank you.
And thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Dan? Okay, next up, we have new business, an agreement between the Town of Elska and ZipTility.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be taking this one. ZipTility software is our mapping system software that allows us to collect and retain data that is particularly important to our water and sewer utility. We also are using it somewhat with the, with the storm utility. And I believe the street department's piggybacking on it. And they're, they're using it somewhat for some street inventory. So it's basically a working man's GIS system. It's very user-friendly. And currently, we have a contract with them that's up for renewal in April. And we have a contract currently for mapping only. They have a system that is an upgrade from what we have now that would allow the whole town to start utilizing the system. And we could integrate with a street department, planning, and a fire department in particular, maybe even with the police department, but particularly the other departments I just mentioned, that would allow us to share data, be able to coordinate information with the planning department when permits are put out. And when we put in the utilities, it'll allow the clerk's office to keep an asset management current. And as we go along, every, every time we dig up the street, touch any of our utilities, we can be pinging the locations and, and allowing us to have exact locations of where all of our infrastructure is. It collects photos and also will produce work management, work orders for us. And it's, it's, it'll, it'll allow the whole town to be on the same page when it comes to the comings and goings of our departments and how it relates to each other. I have, I think, Tyler, are you on tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, Tyler's here. He can go through a presentation if you like, or he can just answer particular questions about what they do. I will say they're a local business. And we've been using their equipment, I don't know how long, Tyler. At least two years?
Yeah, I think we're coming up on our fourth year.
Yeah, and so all of our utility people have iPads in their trucks. And we are now replacing the paper maps and some of the outdated ways of collecting information and retaining it. And we're putting it on, putting it on our iPads. And it allows us to change when we find part of the system is not like we like it says it is in our records. We can immediately change it and upgrade it. And that data is stored. And it, it allows us to upgrade our mapping system on a daily basis, if not an hourly basis. So it's, it's already proven to be helpful. And I mean, it's the way of the future, anyway. And as Tyler and I was discussing today, it's taken me 22 years to say, I pretty much know where everything is in our system. We have 107 miles of water pipe, probably 120 now, now I think about it. We have five, over 500 fire hydrants. We have 5,500 meters. We have two water tanks. And I can't remember, about 50 miles, maybe not that much, of sewer. And probably five pump stations. So we have a lot of infrastructure. And so it's taken me 22 years to say, I pretty much know where everything's at. But even now, with the growth in our town and our community, it's getting away from us. I mean, I can't even remember the names of the streets, let alone keep track of what's getting put in the ground. So as that happens, we will collect this data and it'll, and what, what we know up till, you know, after 22 years and what we had before that and things that we've corrected. That information, 20 years from now, whoever takes my place, if I've decided to quit by then, whoever takes my place, whatever kind of manager you are, will be one thing. But the fact that they can reach back 20 years in the past and talk to us and know what we know now, will allow them to be even a better manager for the system and will create efficiencies and money savings that it's just, it's, you know, I just can't express what that'll do. It, it allows a town or a water company to be independent of, of their contractor. If they hit the lottery and decide to leave, then they still retain all that information. And with the growth that we have, just keeping track of the assets and having it somewhere stored where we don't lose it is, it's worth a lot. I, I told, I said Tyler was going to give a presentation, but I'm probably killing him right now by taking the air out of his presentation. So I'll stop there. We have a new contract that we want to enter with the upgraded system. Currently, I think we pay oh, I had that about $4,860 a year. And we want to upgrade to an entire package for the town of $14,925 yearly. And this year, the utilities will pay for that, and it'll be in the budget for 2023. And we'll decide what the other departments should pay as part of that. With that, I'll quit talking.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Tyler or Mike?
Actually, Tyler, on, can you build on what he said? Everything else that he hasn't taken away from the presentation you were going to do?
He did a great job. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, guys, and Tyler. Well, we call what we do operations and asset management software. We build tools specifically for small communities. Elska was actually one of our first customers, like I said, almost four years ago. Our best customers now tend to be small communities that aren't as small as they used to be. I know you all know what that means in Elska. Mike and I and some of the other department heads have been speaking over the last few months. And, and we'd like to be more helpful in helping the town deal with its growing pains. I think specifically in Elska's case, that's kind of doubling down on building a source of truth that's accessible to everyone. A lot of that progress has already been made, but with, with looping in others and adding on the work management features, we can speak to how, that, that tends to get done a lot faster. Also helping, like Mike said, with upcoming and new compliance requirements. So asset management planning is really important now for small, especially utility systems that are looking to get low-interest financing from the state. There's lending copper rule stuff that's becoming more and more important, as well as PESA rating type stuff that folks like Kip are already working on. And then maybe the piece that I'm most excited about is helping kind of streamline cross-departmental workflows. So a lot of the, the progress that we've made, all of the progress that we've made so far has been within utilities. But as you all know, you know, your infrastructure doesn't really care about what department you're in. So enabling ways for workflows between different members of the, the town staff, I think will, will really help eliminate mistakes. So de-risk things a bit, as well as streamline some of the current operations that you all have in place.
Is so, well, everyone have like a user ID and the town employees, they can log on? And they have different privilege levels, or how will, how will it basically be set up?
Yeah, that's a great question. And the answer is yes. Of course, you can sort of make decisions about that as, as you go. But we have a really advanced privileging system. Something that we didn't mention is that with this new contract also comes a new service package. So though the, it looked a little bit different four years ago when we first started with Elska. We did some data conversion and trained the existing staff on, on how to get going. We'll do all of that again. We have ourselves a larger, I like to think, more sophisticated staff, because it's not just me anymore. So we'll train department by department. And we call it customer success, not customer support. So it's sort of a goal-oriented programming that, of course, also involves things like, you know, privileges and passwords and helping folks get things divided, downloaded on their devices.
And so we won't need any new hardware?
No, no, that's another, a good question. That, that's a, one of the things that we're most proud of is that we work with or without an internet connection on any mobile device. Say, and the asterisk I probably should give is created within the last 10 years, because sometimes people try to push that. But yes, you will not need new hardware.
What, what about upgrades? Will, as you guys upgrade, will we be free upgrades for this price, or?
Yeah, good question. Short answer is yes. So obviously, we're coming and asking for more money now than we did four years ago. That's for an entirely new suite of products. In this contract, you'll see that there's, I think, a $2,000 discount, which is us grandfathering in sort of, our, our new pricing involves or includes upgrades for our mapping products as well. Elska has been grandfathered into our original pricing, and that will continue to be the same. So there's always potential of us developing new products. Though our operation suite, which is what we're looking at here, is really pretty comprehensive. And that will not increase over time.
All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, does anybody else have any questions for Tyler? Okay, Sinan, thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll come back to that stupid, so we'll come back to that next time.
I, I was hoping for a vote tonight. I'm a little on the OCD side. And I told Tyler today, I noticed he has a provision where they'd prorate and have us start paying until April, till our contract renew. and have us start paying until April, until our contract renewed. But I just shouldn't make the contract renewable in January. And I mean, we, we don't have to be in a hurry, but this is new business. So do we have to have two readings on this, Darla?
The council can go ahead, vote on a contract.
Yeah, so i, if it's all the same to the board, I would just soon, if you're in favor, or if you're not, I'd just soon decide tonight, and I would like to start the new contract and with the full price, and instead of paying a prorated price till April, and then that's the renewal date, I just shouldn't start in January and just kind of flip-flop it, let them give us a, a credit for, for the three months that we won't be using on the old, old contract. But we can do it either way if, if that is too confusing.
Darla, have you had a chance to look at the contract?
I did, and I sent a letter to council about it.
Okay, must have missed that one. Sorry. So all the questions that I asked, like the upgrades and the training and all that's included, correct? In the contract that you read?
Yes.
Okay. I'm still not seeing it. How, how long ago did you send it? Oh, I found.
She sent it on Friday.
Yeah, someone responded, that's why, knocked it out. Okay, sorry about that.
I'm prepared to vote tonight. I don't know, but.
I am too. I'll even go as far as to make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Can you give me two seconds, read her email?
Yes, Kip, but he's reading.
Well, he's reading real quick. I just wanted to put my opinion in on this software product that Tyler's got, or his company's got. It's, it's, to me, it's phenomenal. It's really good. A lot of our guys have already started to use it. We're using street signs. We're managing our street signs with it at this time. And like as Mike said, stormwater as well. But we're still working on it. There's a lot of signs in our town. But it's really, it's really a good, good software program. I just wanted, you all know that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm fine. Go ahead.
Okay, so do I have a motion then? Start over. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve contract.
Second.
Okay, Sandy, whenever you're ready.
Who is the second?
Trevor.
Thank you. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. We're really looking forward to the upgrade. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm real excited about this too, as you can tell, the questions I'm asking. So this is something that I've kind of been wanting to see for a long time, so kudos, Mike.
Thank you, everyone. Feel free to ask other follow-up questions as you have them, and obviously we'll keep you in the loop on progress. Appreciate your help.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next we have Privilege of the Floor. Does any public have anything to say that we didn't talk about tonight? Okay, I see none. So next will be Supervisor Comments. Do we have any supervisors? You're good, Mike, okay. How about Mike Farmer?
Yeah, I'll start. Well, I just wanted to remind everyone, the work session scheduled for next week is on Tuesday. Monday's the national holiday. And so I, I, when I was, when I sent something out today about the work session, I can't remember. For some reason, I, I was thinking that we made it at 6 o'clock, but I'm pretty sure 6:30 is the time now. I couldn't find anything in a minute, so I assume it's gonna be at 6:30 at the town hall, unless the board decides otherwise.
Board, what do you think? Six?
Six. 6:30 in person's good with me.
Okay.
Okay, Mike, I do have a question for you, though. Are you gonna send the list out so like the public or people will know what we're gonna be discussing?
Well, we can when we get closer. I'm sorry it took till today to get you any kind of list out at all. I hope it is not confusing. I tried to keep it simple so we could just, it's an easy read, just, just so we could get through it. But I, I want your comments today, maybe tomorrow, and decide how you want to go about it. And then Wednesday, or maybe even Thursday, like usual, Sandy can send out the invitation, and we will, we will have the list or the agenda that you want, and that, and then we'll publish it.
Okay, you said it was in person?
Yes, I would prefer it to be in person. I know right now it's kind of catch-and-go everywhere, but I think we can reasonably space, and we'll be fine. And I think we can get a lot more done in person than we can on a Zoom meeting. This Zoom meetings went well, but just when you're talking as important as business as we will be talking about, I think it definitely needs to be in person.
And, okay, so it's gonna be in person. Okay. Is that all right with everybody?
I'm fine with it. Are we doing a hybrid or just in person? Well, I, never mind. I'm, I answered myself.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about the work session? Okay, how about more Supervisor comments? Anybody else? Kip?
I have nothing.
Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, so now we go to Council Comments. Does any of the council have any comments they'd like to make? None? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Sandy, roll call, please.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 7:08 PM.
Okay, goodbye, everybody. See you in work session next week.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you. Congratulations to you too, Vice President.
Recording stopped.
Thank you, everyone.